Like that?
Yep.
That far.
The whole group there, buddy. I've got my saving.
Eddie Daniel? Okay. Well, go ahead and call the meeting to order Monday, November the 20th. If you all will stand for the pledge of allegiance and for a moment of reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of any justice for all.
Standing for a moment of reflection with the Thanksgiving holidays coming up. I think that all of us need to be thankful for what we have. We need to be sure that everybody, all our citizens, are taken care of the best that we can. And in things to come with the world situation today, we need to be especially thankful for what we have in the United States. With that being said, amen. Thank you. Be seated. Need to make one add-on to the agenda today under section D. That would be the propane bids, and Daniel will be presenting that. With that being said, I need a motion in a second to change the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I motion. He's seconding.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Likewise, for opposed. Thank you. Motion carries five oh. Motion on the minutes, page three through 10. Everybody's had their packet for a few days. If there need a motion in a second unless there are any changes to be made.
Motion to the minute. Right to check. Danny or?
Second. Motion in a second. You let me know, okay? All those in favors, raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries five oh. Always first item on the agenda is the public comments. I don't know if anybody signed up. I didn't see the list, but if anybody has any public comments, now's your time to come forward. State your name, and you know, you got the three minutes. You know the drill.
He's on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
You're on the agenda.
You're on the agenda.
He has a place on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Instead of the three minutes, you know, you're on the agenda to speak.
Should I go sit down?
Yeah, just go. That's, thank you. If there's nobody else for public comments, okay, well, I'll go ahead and close that part of the section. Thank you. Under the consent agenda, uh, have, well, there'll be one item, but we can go ahead and approve the consent agenda, and then I have an item that I would like to read after the consent agenda is approved. Is there any questions about the consent agenda? Not a need motion in a second to approve?
Motion made.
Second.
A motion in a second. Rita?
Sure.
Your whole crowd there.
Wait a minute, we got to vote.
To vote.
Pardon me.
You have a motion in a second.
Sorry, I thought we did. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries five oh. We got the whole crowd here.
Yes, sir.
The tax office is one of the most important offices, I think, one of the most important that we have in the county, and they've been recognized with the Joseph E. Hunt Distinguished Jurisdiction Award for Small Jurisdictions presented to Allegheny County in recognition of outstanding achievements in tax administration and public service. This is awarded by the North Carolina Association of Assessing Officers, November the 16th, And that's, that's quite a, quite an honor. I know that you all want this upstairs, but eventually, we may have a place down here to put such awards as this. Rita, if you come, you presented this, and why don't you introduce your crowd and let us all know what they do in the tax office?
I'll start out by saying a little bit about this award. So every year at the assessors conference, they do a small, medium, and large jurisdiction award, and that's based on a project you've done throughout the year, and it's submitted, and then the association votes on the project. And our project was pictometry, which I'll be giving you much more information about at our annual report next month. So we were very proud to win this award. First time that I know that Allegheny's ever been recognized for anything with the tax office. So we were very excited. Theresa and Kelly were at the conference and accepted the award on our behalf, and so we were very, very excited. So I'll introduce my staff to you. Veronica Raleigh is one of our newer members. She is in the tag office. So Veronica, about six weeks, is that right? A month?
About two.
Two months, okay. All right. Time flies. So Missy Smith, Missy is your deputy tax collector. Theresa Dotson, Theresa is your real property appraisal. She's got a level three certification, and this project was mainly a project that she did, so super proud of her for doing that. I just went blank. Jeff Chandler is my newest employee. He is your assistant tax collector. Kelly moved to Georgia's position where she retired last month as personal property appraiser, and Kelly couldn't be with us today, so she filled that spot. Jeff came in her spot and has done excellent job, comes from years of customer service, and we're thrilled to have him. So and then you have Candace Wagner, who is your tag office or registration supervisor. So that is your tax office team, and they do a great job. So thank you for taking a moment to recognize them this morning. I appreciate it.
Thank you all for everything that you do, and I've had, I met you the other day. I got my taxes paid. That's off my table for now, so I feel good about that. But thank all of you for everything you do, and like I say, that you're the ones who keep us going, and we really appreciate everything that you all do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we move on to section B, presentations to the board. And first up is Finance Update, April Ham.
Good morning.
Morning.
I passed out the, the finance update. Should, should have had a copy in front of you. It looks a little different this morning because county manager asked for a comparison, looking back at a couple of years to see where we are on revenue and expenditures. Current year revenue, eleven million, one hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-six cents. That represents about fifty-six percent of our revenue. And if you look back to '22 and '23, it was ten million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty in fiscal year '23, and ten million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty, thirty-eight cents for fiscal year '22. So that kind of gives you a comparison where we've been the past three years. On expenditures, current year, seven million, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-two cents, which represents thirty-seven percent of our approved budget. Last year at this time, seven million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars. That represented about thirty-nine percent of our budget. And for fiscal year '22, six million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-seven cents, which represent, represented about thirty-five percent of our budget that year. Total approved budget for the current fiscal year is twenty million, eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Last year's approved general fund budget was eighteen million, four hundred and twelve dollars and eight, excuse me, too many numbers, eighteen million, four hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. And the approved budget in fiscal year '22, seventeen million, six hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Bank balance as of Friday in our public checking account, nine million, nine hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and seventy-five cents. In our savings account, public fund savings account, twelve million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eight cents, for a total of twenty-two million, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-three cents. Last year at this time, our bank balance was nineteen million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and forty-five cents. And two years ago, at this time, fourteen million, forty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. And then the bottom part is our comparison of the net financials, looking back two years. Current year, net financials, three million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and seventy-four cents. This time last year, three million, three hundred thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. And this time, two years ago, four million, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, thirty, excuse me, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, thirty-one dollars and ninety-one cents. So can I answer any questions about the information that's been provided for you?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Carter?
Just have one comment. If you look at the three columns at the top of the page, and you see the fifty-six percent, fifty-seven, sixty, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, thirty-five, those are pretty good reflections on how accurate the numbers have been and consistent over those three-year spans of time.
Every, every month, you give this report, and it seems to get a little bit better every month. And this is something, you know, that the, the finance officer, Mr. Carter, all of you, and the board, we're very proud of this financial statement compared to where we were three and a half, four years ago, almost four years ago, I think next month before. So I mean, we've come a long ways.
Yes, we have.
And I, I think we've spent the taxpayers' money wisely, and that's created these numbers of what we've been able to do and what we've been able to offer to the people. I'd like to thank you especially, Mr. Carter, and rest of your staff for doing some great work, and you know, this, this board has been behind you a hundred percent, all of you with the, with the proposals that's been made over these few years. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a team effort.
Yes.
Team buy-in for everything also. So your second page is sales tax. Actually, the top portion of it is last year. Last year at this time, we had brought in three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-three cents in sales tax. This year, currently, three hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-five cents. So it is still just a little bit behind where it was last year. You have a third page that just has the quarter cent sales option. The total is ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-four cents, but this month, I have just highlighted in that green at the bottom, just for this month, it came in for Department of Revenue, was thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and nine cents. So it is staying pretty consistent between thirty and thirty-five thousand on that quarter cent option. So any questions?
Any comments or questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Under section B, item two, the facilities update, David Spicer. Thank you, David. Come on.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. I thank you for the opportunity to come to speak to you this morning. A few things that we have going on in our county for our facilities. We have developed a crack in the new sidewalk, so I have been in contact with the contractor for the administration building here. He is going to make that right. He's going to cut that out and redo that. So other than that, the administration building is in pretty good shape right now. Transfer facility, the compactor that we had purchased, it's up and going, and you'll see in these numbers, it has helped with the cardboard. So we've sent the grant request for funds to be sent to us. That's been placed, and the final report has been done and already sent in, so hopefully we'll get that twenty thousand dollars pretty soon for that. So co-mingle, we didn't have any loads this time, but cardboard, cardboard, we had two loads, which is eleven point one five tons, which is about three ton per load, more than what we've been getting. So that compactor has made a difference in that. So we had two loads of scrap metal, which totaled seven point two five tons, which yielded us sixteen hundred and twenty-four dollars even. At Ninety South Main, we did get the walls washed. We borrowed a lift and didn't cost us anything for that, so that was positive, and got the walls pressure washed. So the three walls that was remaining on the building there at Ninety South Main, those have been taken care of, and it really looks different. It made the building look a lot different. The only thing that's left there is the entrance still needs to be completed. It needs to be finished. I have not talked to the contractor in about a week, but he assured me that as soon as the subcontractor who was doing the finishing of the floor completed, one of the big houses that he was working on, he'd be through to, to take care of that for us. The fire grounds, line clubs, Veterans Park, and Black Building, we have winterized both the fire grounds and the lines club, so that should be good. And the heat is on in the bathrooms for Veterans Park and the Black Building. EMS, we did have HVAC unit that went out. It was more cost-effective for us to replace than it was to repair, so we have a new HVAC unit at the EMS base. R and D has come up, and they spent the day Thursday at the courthouse. I do not know yet their findings, but they are, I'm sure, working on those things, and will make a report to us shortly on that. So in the animal control, we had ten calls where we assisted the sheriff's department. Two calls were dogs and livestock. We had four wheel checks. We had three dogs and/or cats picked up. We had thirteen that was running at large. We had three attacks, and we only had to quarantine one. We had a total time of ninety-eight hours with thirty-six calls and five hundred and twenty-one miles traveled. So I'll entertain any questions that you might have at this time.
Any questions? Any questions?
How much you got in the dog at the vet's office now?
I do not know what the total is at this present time. The last we knew was twenty-three thousand.
Probably the spring of the year.
I know that the next court dates March.
Three thousand dollars in dogs?
Most likely.
Any, anything else? I just got one question. Are we trying to look about putting some, the decoration lights on Ninety South Main?
They're on.
Like the rest of the town has?
They're on it.
They're on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll come through one night and look at them. Any other questions? Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to mention the lights. They're, they're actually on during the day too, but they're on.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Yes, sir.
Next up is the library report. Debbie Brewer.
Good morning, everyone. It's very nice to be here. I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you this morning. I just wanted to go over a few things of what's happened in the library, both in Allegheny and in our regional system. Of course, you know Debbie Brewer. We have some board members with us as well, Dale Caveney, Beth Dixon, Carolyn Sprinkle, and Joyce Spees. And Mr. Walker serves on our local board as well as our regional board. We appreciate that. And Michelle has, is a former board member, and we appreciate your service. So thank you so much. There are just a few handouts here. I just want to mention a few things about those. First of all, I want to congratulate you on your great financial situation too. I know that's certainly a lot of work and teamwork with everyone, and it certainly is the key to anything any of us do, is that teamwork, and we certainly try to do that with, working together with Allegheny County Library. We want to thank you for your past support of the Allegheny County Library, especially this past year. With that financial support, we were able to get the staff on our pay, on the pay plan, which again, as you all know, is one that all the boards adopted, and it really was a result of a study of comparable counties with, and looking at comparable pay. So we are very glad, because as you all know, it's very important to keep and retain good staff, to be able to pay them a living wage so they can pay their bills and put the money back in the county. So thank you all so much for that support. As you all know, Allegheny County Library is a great asset to the community. It's books and programs and storytimes and job assistance and computer help. The staff answers questions, and they help people get books and AV from all across North Carolina. The staff helps people with technology. They help students find what they need. They help people with job applications. They provide programs to children's and people of all ages. Lastly, the library is a home away from home. It is for everybody, all residents. It is a community center of Allegheny County. Last year, you have a sheet that looks like this, okay? And these are region statistics of the four counties, Allegheny, Surrey, Stokes, and Yakon, and Allegheny is pretty much reflected in these totals here. But as you see, it was a good year, the fiscal year '22, '23. Our book circulation was up almost ten percent. So if people say, are people reading? The answer is a resounding yes. The technology lending, we have hotspots that can be checked out through a federal grant, as well as some laptops, and of course, that jumped up. And it's been a very successful program, especially during the days of the pandemic, because we know everyone does not have internet at home or access. And again, people need it, students need it, adults need it. Our programs are up almost twenty-three percent. Attendance, thirty-six point five. Our meeting room use, thirty-six point four. Attendance, almost sixty-three percent. So people are coming back to the library. We're getting back to where we were before, and we're even exceeding those numbers. And then the bar graph at the bottom compares the fiscal year '21, '22, and '22, '23. And you can see the patrons are our users, and that was up almost eight percent, the numbers of people who have library cards. The visits were up eleven percent, which is, is good, and the Wi-Fi use, which keeps increasing, was up over fourteen percent. So again, I think that we can see the libraries are growing thanks to your support and also the very, very good work of the staff here in Allegheny and in our other twelve libraries as well. So we do try to be very good stewards of the taxpayers' money. We take it very seriously. We know that we're all taxpayers, and we work hard for our money, and we certainly want to be as fair to the taxpayers as, as we possibly can, since we all are those. We do continue to thrive and grow. The staff continues to be very busy serving the public of Allegheny County. Another thing that I brought is this little brochure, and I saw some of you looking at it. This is actually, and Debbie has some in your little, your gift bags here, along with an insert just for Allegheny County with some things about the Allegheny Library. This is kind of comprehensive of the total system. Like to just highlight a few things. It is a lot slicker looking than we usually do, believe me, because we tie rubber bands together, we, you know, reuse everything. Certainly pieces of paper, we turn them over and use the other side, but this was a priority of our regional board with funds, federal funds that came through for public libraries, non-recurring state aid. And the regional board's top priority was to try to get the message out about libraries and make sure people know they have a library, because we know everybody doesn't know they have a library anywhere, and that there is something for everybody at the library. Some people may not be great readers. They may say, I don't read, and that's fine. There are many, many other things at the library and many other kinds of assistance for people of all ages. So again, with that being the top priority of our regional board, we went to work and were able to develop these brochures and a new logo that we hope will last for a long time, that will be in all of our libraries. You can see the, the logo, the rebranding there. The four colors represent our four counties. We want people to know that there are resources here that are made possible through all of you and the town of Sparta, but also, there's so many other resources that are available to Allegheny County through our regional system, through these four counties, as well as we were able to reach out to the state too, so that there are many more resources that are amplified by the funds that you give to this library. I'd like just to mention a few things here. I know you all can read this without any trouble, but as you see, the libraries are listed on the front there. When you open it up, that middle section, mention some of our online resources, and we hope that, I see Mr. Irwin nodding his head, and that's wonderful. Thank you. Hope you're familiar with them. If not, hope you'll use them. If you need any assistance, the staff will be more than happy. NC Cardinal allows all of us to access over seven million items across the state of North Carolina, and that's books, and AV, things that alone, we, none of us could ever do, nobody could do. So we're really glad to do that. That's at no cost to Allegheny County. And again, books are shipped in from all these libraries across the state to our regional headquarters that is in Elkhorn, and then we have a courier four, five days a week that goes out to all the libraries. It's a hundred and seventy-five mile round trip, round trip tour. It's beautiful country, and of course, coming to Allegheny is everybody's favorite always. But again, we get those things out, and then they're returned to Elkhorn and shipped back through UPS too. And again, no charge. And again, no charge to folks in Allegheny County. There's also NC Live, which are databases. I hope some of you've had a chance to use them. There's a database for everybody, for students, adults, business people, car repair, just about anything. So please, please, please check that out. NC Kids Digital is a wonderful resource. It is books online for kids. And we all know that the good old paper, hardback are wonderful. We'll, we love them. We think they'll be around forever, but we all know that we use digital resources as well. So this is a service through the state that is open to all kids in Allegheny County, free of charge. And then the Libby Overdrive are, again, books online. And we know that there are a lot of people who do that, who read online as well. So we try to keep up with the demand, with the requests of what is going on. We do have a partnership with Appalachian Regional Library that are neighbors, Ashwataga and Wilkes, so that any of those ebooks can also be borrowed by folks in Allegheny. So we do try to stretch those dollars as much as we can. On the back, there are just some other resources on the inside folded. On the very back are our regional board members. And we appreciate Greg Walker, Carolyn Sprinkle, and Missy Weaver to serve on our regional board that is our governing board. So we do appreciate that. We are here for you. We hope that if you have any questions, any suggestions to us, that you will let us know. That's how we, how we grow and improve. We, we love working in partnership with everybody here. It's a real pleasure. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Comments, Greg?
A good job. Keep it up.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And we do try to, and we appreciate your support. You all know what a great staff you have here. It's a pleasure, true pleasure to work with all of you and we can't appreciate, thank you enough. Debbie, I think you have some really interesting things now, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Good morning to all of you. And I wanted to share a little bit about our local library, just a little bit on figures. We had, I went back a year, started in September of '22 to just get an entire year. We had a door count of 23,472 people that entered our library last year, just to give you an idea on how many people comes and goes. We have, we checked out, which is books, audios, and DVDs. We checked out 35,274 of those. And we, as Joan mentioned, we have hotspots. We have, well, two now. And they stay out all the time. So we hope we can add some more to that.
That's a federal grant.
It is, yes. It is.
It's our third round.
We do a lot of, there's a lot of usage of our meeting room. For last, the last 12 months, we had 509 different activities, programs in that back room, attended by more than 6,000 people, just to give you an idea. And some of those are small groups, but there's a lot of people that comes in. We have people who contacts me quite often who wants to use our meeting room. And that is definitely encouraged and we just have to schedule, so, because we have a lot going on. We have done some collaboration with the schools. We do the elementary battle, the books competitions. We have collaborated with Appalachian State and High Country Cobb to offer Tai Chi classes for seniors, which we have a class going on right now. One of our staff has been trained and we also have a friend of the library who is also trained to offer that. And we also worked with them to do an Aging Well series for seniors this year. We try to reach out to every group, so seniors all down to our storytime. Our storytime is running like around 30, 30-plus people in that room every Monday. We have a lot of little ones right now. I mean, three-year-olds and under. So we have several people come into that. We've collaborated with the Extension Service on various activities. Carmen Long and also Amelia from a group in Winston do an online program for the preschoolers. And Carmen also does, they do one a month for, I want a month for the food classes to teach them, the little ones, what healthy eating is about. And if you might want to take a look at our web, at our webpage, new webpage, we have updated it this year and it looks much nicer. Our own Kate has done a lot of the original work on it, but now a group has taken over and working with that because it's quite a big job and it looks much, much better. So I hope you'll take a look at our webpage. We are, have Makerspace activities for youth and also we have homeschool group that meets regularly. And our, going back to the, to the Makerspace, we have, through a grant, the region has purchased different Makerspace kits and they are going from library to library. So we have two new ones that come in like each month for the, everybody to use. We have a Novel Cinema program for the public. Beth Dixon has been handling, doing that and it's been really well received. We're right now, and we have a grief share group going on for those who, loved ones who, who've lost loved ones. We have several people come into that. Just anything we, the library wants to be involved in any way we can for the community to help our, our community members. We are doing a volunteer tutoring program right now. We have eight students that are recommended by their teachers and have volunteer tutors that are helping them. A big request is math. And a lot of our adults don't want to be tutors in math. So I've reached out to the high school and some of our media club students are actually some of the tutors for that. And we recently did a chocolate extravaganza fundraiser. We do from time to time some fundraisers and that was done by the friends to raise funds. So we do that from time to time. We had, I think it was around 40 people who attended that and several people who had wonderful chocolate desserts there, so. But we've, the other thing I wanted to mention, we did a town council candidates forum this year. And last year, we did a commissioners candidates forum, which was done by the friends. There are people who, when we don't have things in our budget, they step in and they do so much for us. So anyway, does anybody have any questions? Anything I can answer?
Questions? John? Comments, Greg? Mr. Carter, anything?
We do want to, if it's okay, I want to hand out something to all of you. And in that, we have Suzanne probably got hers and I wondered, you probably wondered why your name wasn't on it. It's because it's, you're getting it right now. We have invitations to a Happy Holidays reception. Hope you will come. It's the 13th of December from 3 to 6. Love to have all of you come in. We'd love to showcase some of the things the library has. We'll have a quilt exhibit by the quilters who use our library for meetings. We, they're going to be doing some demos. We're going to have our, some of our Makerspace things out. We have two new children's computers that have just arrived and so we'll have, hopefully have some kids there and some of our homeschool families maybe will be there. Just different things that's going on in the library. So I hope you'll come out, have some really good refreshments coming too, so. So let's head these out and thank you all for letting us take your time this morning.
Thank you.
We have our board who's working very hard on this open house too. Beth is helping to head it up too. We appreciate that.
Beth and Carolyn and I've met several times.
The first Bob got Paul in the mix is...
Thank you very much.
We know what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Under Section B, the item number four, Via Health. Zach Shepard, Zach, come on up.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thanks for having me. So I've, I've got a presentation for you this morning on some updates that, just some things going on with the state, with LME MCOs. And of course, it's, it's our job to keep you guys informed, let you know what's happening. I will pull up this presentation. Do we have a copy of presentation? Oh, okay. Thought I'd sent that. I will make sure you get that. So just briefly, as you all know, I'm sure, the, the state budget has passed with a lot of, lot of different things, but one of those things is Medicaid expansion. Of course, we're going to see that come into fruition beginning December 1st.
Do you want to shoot it to me and email real quick?
Okay, it should be coming to you. So also with the passing of the state budget, the Secretary of Department of Health and Human Services was directed to reduce the number of LME MCOs to no more than five and no fewer than four. The secretary made his decision to dissolve Sandhill's LME MCO and distribute the counties out amongst the remaining LME MCOs. We will be receiving one county as a part of that dissolution. That will be Rockingham County. That'll be assigned to Via Health. Also with this dissolution, the secretary has decided to ask East Point LME MCO to consolidate with Trillium LME MCO. So that is effectively going to leave four LME MCOs across the state. And that was part of the design with Medicaid reform that started a few years ago. The, the General Assembly made it clear that they wanted to get four LME MCOs in the state. We'll, we will, we will keep updating on, on these, these changes and what this means for us at Via Health. And of course, our tailored plan, Go Live Date, is no later than July 1st, 2024.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Zach, there was no attachment that came?
There was no attachment. I apologize. I thought this was... Danielle, it looks like I see... Okay, yes. That's okay. Not a problem.
It looked right, Zach.
There we go.
That's it. Yeah, we can go on to, there, there we go. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so our consolidated Innovations waiver waitlist dashboard was released. This is, the Innovations waiver is the statewide waiver for folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities who receive services in the community. We are continuing to work on our tailored care management rollout. That is, that is ongoing. We're, as I said, Medicaid expansion has come as a result of this budget. The Go Live Date is December 1. We're encouraging folks that if they feel like they may be eligible for Medicaid with this expansion to go online, start looking at this toolkit that the Department of Health and Human Services has released. It lays out pretty clearly eligibility requirements, so folks should be able to go on and look and see if they're going to be eligible for Medicaid. The, the state is really, the department's really trying to make it as seamless as possible for folks to, to, to register. There is a, an online process called the ePass process. Folks can go ahead and start that process now and we would encourage them to do so with the Go Live Date of December 1. But they can also go into their local DSS office and go through the process that way as well. So with the expansion, Via Health is anticipating bringing on an additional 29 members to our tailored plan from Allegheny County. Now that is 29 members that will receive Medicaid through Via Health. That is not the total number of eligible Medicaid recipients with this expansion. That is only those that Via Health will be managing. There's also a program called Healthy Opportunities that is focused on folks' social determinants of health that we'll be launching in February, on February 1st. This is focusing on folks' access to food, their housing, those sort of things to make sure that everyone is, is healthy in those regards. And our Innovations Amendment was not submitted timely. Again, the Innovations waiver is the waiver for folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Those flexibilities were to end November 11th, 2023. So he, yes, thank you. So here are, I've listed some of our budget provisions so that you can see just kind of the breakdown between fiscal year '24 and '25. These are the provisions for intellectual and developmental disabilities and our traumatic brain injury services. And then we can go to the next page. And then these are our provisions for the behavioral health budget. And of course, if you've got questions about those, I'll be happy to answer any questions. So we can, we can go ahead and move on. So I did want to highlight a couple of things that we've been working on in partnership with benchmarks at the state, really focusing on children and families. Specifically, our Pathways to Permanency program have been focusing on foster care and our youth in foster care. So we are going to be kicking off a foster care recruitment campaign. We, across the state, across the country, foster care recruitment has been really crucial and has been really struggling, especially here in our state. We've been struggling to get new foster families and recruit those families, both in therapeutic foster care as well as family, regular family foster care homes. So we're kicking off this campaign in conjunction with our DSS offices to really start ramping things up and recruiting more foster, foster care families. Okay, we can move to the next slide. We've also really had a lot of requests for trainings and with our Pathways to Permanency, we... program, we've partnered with Benchmarks to really make those trainings happen. These are a list of some of our trainings that are offered, have been offered, or will be offered, and these trainings will also be available on our website in the future to anyone who wants to access those trainings. Okay, we can move to the next slide. And then also, I just wanted to highlight briefly a new program that we're going to be kicking off with Youth Villages, which is comprehensive clinical assessments for youth in foster care. And this is for any youth in foster care in DSS, across our DSS counties. This is going to assure that any youth coming into foster care can have a trauma-informed assessment to get them the treatment that they really need and deserve. And that will be kicking off soon. Questions? I'll be happy to answer any.
Any questions? How many counties are now in Via's area?
So with the addition of Rockingham, that will make us 32 counties.
Thirty-two?
Yes.
Is Via the largest?
I believe that that, as far as counties go, that will go to Trillium on the eastern side of the state. But of course, our counties are... We cover largely the rural counties, the western mountain counties, and then, of course, there are others that cover the more urban areas, the Charlottes, the Winston-Salem's, the Rollies. So their populations are...
Yeah, numbers are...
Yeah.
Any additional questions? Mr. Carter, comments? Okay, Zach, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I hope you all have a great Thanksgiving.
Appreciate it. On the presentation to the board, Matthew Williamson, you're up.
Now, we're at the correct time. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. Honorable members of the Allegheny Board of Commissioners, Chairman, I stand before you today not as a resident of Allegheny County, but as a business owner deeply invested in its future. We are at a pivotal moment in time where decisions we make now will significantly shape the future of our community. Our county is blessed with natural beauty, incredible fishing, magnificent hunting opportunities, and an idyllic country setting. Allegheny truly has much to offer, yet the lack of economic growth and the struggle to attract in new jobs and businesses is a glaring issue. It is reflection, perhaps, that our current strategies are lagging or misaligned with the evolving world of today. I think that one of the examples of this in recent times is we're seeing a trend, and this should be very concerning, a shrinking of revenue, one to the TDA, and two from sales tax. Disappointingly, no clear solutions or reasons have been put forward as to this current trend. This isn't just a trend. It's a signal. It's a call to action that we need to rethink and to rejuvenate our approach to economic growth and development and to attracting tourists. We have a unique opportunity, thanks to our outstanding internet connection here and our fiber optic speeds, to draw in technologically-centered businesses, remote workers, and tourists seeking a respite from the frenzy activities of Greensboro and Charlotte and Raleigh. Our strategy should be to showcase our country's natural allure, its serene lifestyle, and the honest and decent culture that defines Allegheny. We can grow our county on the basis of the very principles and the way of life that so many desperately want to defend here. We can find people who want to be in our community, to be a part of it, and not seek to change it into something twisted and unrecognizable. All we need to do is reach out to them. However, to achieve this, we need fresh perspectives. We need innovative ideas and people willing to take calculated risks. We need leaders who can envision the big picture and work selflessly towards it. Serving in such a role is not just about leadership. It's about being a true public servant, putting the welfare of Allegheny and its people above personal gain. Commissioners, I chose Allegheny as my home, not by birth, but by choice. My commitment to this land runs deep. Further cemented each year as I participate in the community events like Trunk and Tree and Sparta. We handed out over 1,000 pieces of candy last year. I didn't know the count for this year, but I believe we got another 1,000 out. I am reminded that our actions today will shape their tomorrow. I ask you, are we planting seeds for a prosperous future for them, or are we letting the fields lie follow in service to a past that is quickly fading? We stand at a critical nexus in deciding the direction of Allegheny County. We must act decisively with purpose to stimulate economic growth and tourism. We need people in key positions who act without bias, with only agenda is the betterment of our country, of our county, and the future of our children. So before you is a decision on who you will appoint to the TDA today. So before you make that decision, I want to let these last words sit with you from Ron Bragan. If not us, then who? If not now, when? Together, let us embrace this moment with courage and vision. Let us choose progress and innovation. Let us work together for Allegheny, for the Allegheny we love and are proud to call home. Thank you very much. And with that, I offer myself as a member on the Board of the TDA. I was able to talk to three of you last week before the meeting and present a plan that I have that should help alleviate some of these issues. I think that we have a lot of ideas and many ideas that I would like to present. This isn't the proper forum for all that, but I do have that. And I would like to say that your vote for me for the TDA would be greatly appreciated, and thank you.
Thank you.
Do I ask for questions, Stuart, or did I just hit the road?
Questions? Thank you. That concludes Section B. We'll move on to Section C, General Business for Information. Sports Complex, Michael Carter.
Chairman, as the board recalls, for some months now, we have been talking about, in particular, the opportunity for an outdoor swimming pool here in Allegheny County. And to the degree in which we brought in a firm to do a site selection study, and they have provided that, I believe I provided the last update at a previous meeting. However, along the path, there has also been a desire to think about providing additional fields for recreational use, baseball, softball. We've talked about some actually complexes where I'm sure each of you have seen those where you have a cloverleaf configuration with a building in the middle and everything that accommodates such. I see Randy out in the audience. Randy and Courtney have been leading the discussions on the field portions of this. And as the interest continued to grow, there's been a location up near the Wilkes Community Campus that kind of backs into Davis Field, which we've had two groups look at that provide those type of field services. And, you know, the terrain, the topography, there's... Obviously, there's timber on the property. There's a lot of things that add to it. But my question today for thought, and maybe this becomes a topic on the next agenda after we've thought about it, is while we are looking to find opportunities to provide for an outdoor swimming pool, is the thought process also to try and accommodate some of the needs for additional fields here in the county for recreational uses? And if so, how we can combine the two and make what is on your agenda a complex? And I know that we had some very positive visits from our legislators, and we actually took those two individuals up and showed them kind of where the sites are and what the thoughts were with it. And as you recall, we received, I believe, $400,000 for what I would call seed money to get some of the ideas and plans together for a swimming pool. But if we're thinking outside the box, if we're looking at providing additional recreational opportunities, even the possibility of some tournaments from time to time, maybe we need to rethink a little bit and not just focus on a pool, but focus on additional fields for our own recreational use as well. Now, to do that, I know that the legislators indicated that they need facts and figures. They don't need us to just toss ideas at them. They need facts and figures. Well, to get facts and figures, you're going to have to put out an RFQ to get someone qualified in to perform, you know, some of these studies on this particular site. So what I would propose at your next meeting, because today I'm only tossing out ideas, but I would propose thinking about allowing for an RFQ to go out for an engineer/architect firm that could look at that site to incorporate a pool and the additional recreational facilities we're talking about into that scope of service to provide us with what it would cost or what the estimations would be. So we could then take that information, present it to the legislators, and let them see how they could help to move that through the process. Without that, I don't think there's a chance that it'll work. And I would propose using some of those funds that were originally for that swimming pool designation to help incorporate that complex. So that is what I am tossing out today for consideration. I'm not asking you today. I'm asking you just to think about it. We'll put it on the next agenda. We can actually talk about it if we need to have a work session prior. I think we could do that as well. But with what is occurring, with what interest has grown, I think if we're going to look at that type of outdoor opportunity, I think we should look farther than just a swimming pool, because I think it's been demonstrated the demand is more than just a pool at this time. So I welcome any comments. Randy, of course, is in the background if he'd like to add anything, but I guess I'm looking for what direction from the board, if you think that's a thing that we could look at at our next meeting, or if we could possibly even put on a work session, now's the time to speak about it.
Thank you. Randy, you got some comments?
Just very few, but growing up here as a kid, when I played ball, they went hand in hand. You finished playing ball, you went swimming. I think that the complex is a great idea for our county, because I think they do go in hand, they feed off each other. And if you was able to have these bigger travel ball tournaments, I think swimming pool would absolutely gain by having them both at the same location. That's really all I have to say, is I think it would be a good combination for both.
Just stay right there for a minute. Greg, any questions?
I just want to know what it's going to cost. You can't keep spending and spending and spending.
I think that's what Mr. Carter's asking is for our December meeting, to give him the authorization to go ahead and put out an RFQ so we can find out what the costs are and present this to our two backers that we hope Senator Heiss and Representative Pickett will be able to assist us in. Any questions?
So your ideas, thinking about putting a pool in place? Build them simultaneously?
Right, build them together, but in the same generic area. The pool, of course, we've talked about up near where the tennis courts are at the Lions Club, and then looking at the property that runs down to the community college for the location of the potential ball fields.
Does, if the pool thing does happen, beneficial project?
Definitely.
So RFQ process, you know, their representative said they needed something by April. With you, it probably does.
Phil?
I agree with Timmy on that, and, you know, we've got to provide our youth outlets here, you know? We complain all the time that they're sitting on their phones and their video games playing, and they need to be outside. And Randy has the numbers to prove that we have enough interest in these outdoor sports.
You saying that, just so everybody knows, last year, which was my first year, full year in baseball, softball, we had a total of 303 kids that came out for baseball, softball. We have two active fields, but those two fields are the same two fields that we have to practice on. So if one group is playing a game, one group can't practice. It's just, you know, the numbers don't match up with trying to do a schedule for them to be able to have practice time.
This goes hand in hand with economic development, too, because, you know, youth sports are a huge economic driver now, because there are so many kids that are participating in the AAU ball. We could have tournaments here. We could have lots of people come to fill the restaurants up and visit Sparta. So stay in the hotel, Airbnb, so...
The last tournament that our neighboring county did, there was about 1,600 people that showed up, to give you an idea.
Which county is that?
Grayson.
Well, they got Grayson County to do Allegheny.
Well, these aren't teams from here.
How many will live in Grayson that does Allegheny?
I'm sure there's quite a bit, but most of these people that comes, comes to watch their kids play.
They're apples to apples.
I mean, I know that we have some families now that travel as far as Wilmington to take their kids to play ball.
Yep.
So, you know...
I agree.
We're missing out on a boat. That's all I've got.
John, questions, comments?
Hey, no questions, just a comment that, you know, it's something we've got to look at. The youth, the need is there, but I believe we've also left out one segment, and that would be the soccer, because we've got... Soccer is beginning to become the thing here, and if we're going to do a complex, we need to take into consideration everything.
Well, my idea was if we got the baseball fields, which would be, as Mr. Carter said, a cloverleaf in the fall of the year, when you have soccer going on, you can use the exact same fields to play soccer.
That answers that question. And I was worried initially that funds may not be available, but since the legislature has passed the casino law, and now we're going to have sports betting, there's going to be funds coming in, and this is a golden opportunity to milk the goose that laid the golden egg. So we won't know until we find out how much this is going to cost and the availability of land, because what we're thinking about right now, we may not... We may be a little bit short on land in this particular location, and we may end up having to go back and look at different locations. So I would certainly support it and make sure that we're ready if there is an opportunity to get some funds, because that money's going to go somewhere. I prefer that it go in our bank account.
Yep.
I think, you know, we're looking at... Started out as just a swimming pool.
Yep.
Now we're looking at a sports complex, and that would really encompass multiple sports events, whether it be soccer, softball, baseball. People can remember back several years ago, we had softball tournaments almost every weekend.
weekend.
Yep.
Those tournaments would start Friday, end up on Sunday. Those people would come from all different parts of the state and out of state. They would spend the night here. They would pay for a hotel room. They would buy their dinner here. They would buy gas here. That's economic development. But the main thing is that it gives our youth a place to go instead of looking for trouble or getting into trouble. Now they have a swimming pool complex. They have a sports complex for softball, baseball, soccer, whatever sports comes along.
Bringing for the county, when you do have these tournaments, I mean, people comes in and spends the night if they're coming from Charlotte. I mean, you know, it's just, it's a wide range of opportunities the county and kids can have here.
I think what Mr. Carter's asking for is basically what all commissioners are wanting to know. What is the cost? What's the projected cost? The Sam Browns Mountain was donated to the county years ago, and one of the reasons was it was for outdoor recreation for the people of the county. We've got, there's about 65 or 70 acres there. Can't use every acre of it, because it's the side of the mountain part of it. But from walking over the land, looking at the top graphical maps, there certainly seems to me to be plenty of room for parking lots, for the swimming pool, for the fields, all to be generally very close together. You know, they're not going to be sitting on top of each other, but they're going to be in an area that will encompass all the things that we're looking for. And we've been without a swimming pool, I guess this is the third or fourth year. We need to get this study started, because the money is, we're going to have to be able to present these programs, I would like to, at least by the first of April. So what Mr. Carter's asking for is possibly work session first of December, and then at that meeting, authorization to go with an RFQ to do the study.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Carter.
I just had one thing for Commissioner Gregg. I just googled, but Grayson County's population is 15,359. This is according to July 1 of '22. Allegheny's in July 1 of '22 was 11049, so there's 4,300 people difference.
If people were at the Halloween candy giveaway the other night, I don't know where all these kids come from, but it was just a continual flow of young people, and I mean young people, in kindergarten and on up, so.
Our numbers is majorly increasing. Last year I had 35 kids to play first and second grade basketball. I've got 62 this year, to give you a, just an example, our numbers each year for each event that I've done so far has increased dramatically in numbers.
I'm excited about next month, or our next meeting, but there again, I'll say what Mr. Carter said, that, you know, the funding for this project really depends on how our legislators can support us. This is something the county cannot support. We don't have the tax base that a lot of these counties do.
Yes, great.
And that's why you leave Allegheny County and you see these big sports complexes, but we're going to have to have the help. And from the discussions that we had a few weeks ago, I think that they're going to do everything they can to help us once we present a program to them. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Next, we'll go on to Section D, general business. These are items all for action. And where's Rita's first up?
I think first on your list, we have a motor vehicle appeal, a 2013 Toyota Tacoma truck. This particular taxpayer was concerned because their value went up, which is what we're seeing the trend being the last few years. So the owner's request was $7,890. We had a dealer opinion of 13.5. The median market price according to DMV is $21,089, and the assessor recommendation is $18,920, which is pretty much in the middle of all the recommendations.
Your recommendation is to go with the assessor's recommendation?
Yes, $18,920.
Any questions, comments? This items for action, so we'll need a motion to accept the tax office's recommendation.
Motion to accept the assessor's recommendation.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, likewise. Motion carries five oh. Thank you.
The next is the decision. The gentleman came at the last meeting, Mr. Hughes, and discussed his solid waste fee on his camper on this property on Osborne Memorial Road. So brought that back for decision of the board.
This is, this is a case that we heard last.
Yes, sir.
Last week. Are there any questions, comments, recommendation from the tax office is?
Don't really have a recommendation. That's kind of up to the board, but what we had done back in 2021 was that all campers or campsites received a solid waste fee, and that's what we had, that's what we've been doing.
And just for information, I checked with Rita the other day, and I know several campers that are around the county, and several of them, or this one in particular, has been sitting empty for two years, but they pay their solid waste fee. They haven't been able to use it, so, but they're still paying.
Yes.
So we need a.
What about, what about campground up here at Law Springs, Wild Woodies? They paying on every one of them?
If that's Allegheny, so there's a question about Wild Woodies, and I believe the campgrounds, ash, that changed just a few years ago, but say like Miller's campground off the parkway, they, every hookup has a solid waste fee, and that's what we did in 2021. Now, should the board want to make any changes, that's something we need to know before we start budget process for this year.
If you had a camper in storage, is it, you paying on it?
If it's sitting in storage, like in your garage for storage, no, because it's not hooked up. It's assumed you're not using that.
These peoples here wasn't hooked up either.
They're, but they're being used. In his letter, he talks about there are people that come and stay in those some.
Make a motion that we stick to the rules that we have for this, and if this is not fair or working, then we'll have to change the rules, but we can't do that now. All of the headlines that we.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Are there any discussion by the board members? Mr. Carter, you have a comment?
So with that motion, that denies the appeal. Just want to make sure that everybody understood that.
Yes. See, the gentleman's concern, leaning towards if there's three campers on one piece of property, that we assess one fee. At B and Bs, we charge a waste fee for each bedroom. I think this is something that we failed to take into consideration whenever we changed it in 2021, and we may have to go back and look at that, because it's just not fair. We have a motion in a second to not approve this request. Danielle, you're not putting motions up on the board, are you? We have a motion in a second, not.
I want to say something. What John said does make sense, but also what Timmy said does make sense. We can't go and, we have to stick with the rule that we've got right now, but I could see looking at this again, because, I mean, he does make a good point, you know? We're all using the same place area. The man said that he has people, he uses it as.
This is where he uses it. All the campers, all the trash up. It not happened, but four times, county still has to pay for that tonnage, so, I don't know that they're a real fire way, but point is, they do have that excess that they can take it, and they can go, if it's on Saturday, they can take a couple load of garbage. Depends on who. It's something we need to talk about later and see if we can walk through it, but like right now, I don't think, I mean, we would be appealing it and saying, well, okay, you don't have to pay for yours, and then somebody else to come here next month. Well, I'm in the same situation, so, yeah, I think we need to, just like the move I made, we leave it like it is, and then if we need to dig in, discuss it more, I think there's possible some places there.
We still have the motion in a second on the board. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, three to two, motion carries. Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Under, what was this, April, under general fund budget amendment number nine, kitchen equipment?
Yes. This is to budget for the kitchen equipment, for the remodeling and the kitchen equipment, for the prep of the jailmills, that the board decided last meeting to move forward with. The first budget amendment, which is general fund budget amendment number nine, this is actually the balance of the local assistance funds that came from U.S. Treasury from last year. This is part of our fund balance as it is now. That is the remainder of what was left from last year. The other part of that $50,000 that the county received, we put a new roof on 90 South Main with, so this is the balance of that $50,000.
Any questions, comments? We need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Ready? All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed, likewise. Motion carries five oh.
You had one.
Four one, Bobby.
Is he opposed?
No, four.
Four one.
That motion carries four to one. Number four, April.
And then I have a lot item transfer. I brought before the board a couple of meetings ago, the local assistance funding that came from U.S. Treasury for this year that we received, the $50,000. So this is just transferring that from the unappropriated fund balance for this fiscal year to those two lines that we needed into to start construction and start equipment purchasing.
Questions? Need a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Ready? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, four to one.
Thank you.
Next item is Wilkes Community College lease agreement. Michael Carter and our general counsel, Heather Klein. Straight to Heather.
Fine. So I got a copy of the last lease, and it was an amended lease agreement. It wasn't the original lease that we have with the college. So the changes that are necessary in this amended lease are quite a few, because it's dealing with just an additional piece of property. So we need to get our hands on or find the original lease with the college so that I don't have to make so many changes and spend so much time on amending this one. So what we're going to do, or what I'd say is, we should table this until the next meeting to allow us some time to find the original lease, and then use that one and just add the additional property from this amended lease to the lease that we currently have for the whole, for the half of the building or what they're using. It's just going to be easier to use the original lease than it is to use the amended one with just smaller amounts of information. And it's going to take a lot more to change the amended lease than it will to use the original.
Motion to table till the first meeting in January.
Second.
December.
Do you think we'll need that long?
I'd say mid-month December.
Mid-month December.
Mid-month.
I will change my motion to mid-month December, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir.
Any questions about that? The, Danielle, you ready? I have a question is, are they going to be specific in what they will do to repairs on their part of the building with this extended to a 40-year lease?
Well, there are specific statutory requirements for the, how this works, and the specific statute that you might be referencing is 115D-32, location or local finance and support of institutions. Section D does specifically require that counties that agree to have a satellite campus of a community college locate them, accept the maintenance and utility costs for those campuses. So that puts the onus on the county to maintain and, for maintenance and utility. So that's not something that we can then charge to the community college. So in continuing a lease with them, unless the law changes, that's going to be a, an obligation of the county.
Serving on that state board for two terms. I know that there's state money available to community college and satellite colleges for any major problems that happened at a school. I would like some specific answers from Morgan Francis as to what some of their responsibilities might be if something bad happened at the college, at the, for the building itself.
I don't know that the, the specific reference in the statute is that that's a county responsibility. I mean, it's a county building, and it's the county's responsibility for accepting a satellite campus for the college, a community college. So I don't know if we can go back and change the statute.
I'm not asking to change the statute. I'm asking to have a conversation with the acting president of Wilkes Community as to what, what some of their responsibilities would be. I don't know that signing a 40-year lease, if they're not going to take any responsibilities, how does it benefit the county? what, how does it benefit the county? There needs to be a benefit to the county to extend the lease to 40 years.
The benefit potentially is that we have a satellite campus for the community college located in Allegheny County, which that is a benefit to the residents of the county and...
They're required to have the campus here. We just have to provide a building. They cannot rescind having a satellite campus here if we provide the facility.
And I think that's probably just a conversation that you might need to have and then if there are terms and anything that the college is willing to do, which might be above and beyond what is required statutorily, then we can include that in the lease.
I think that, that's my question.
That, and that would be up to you to determine.
Why don't, why don't, let me set up a meeting to have that conversation sometime in next, before the mid-month meeting in December to get those answered. And my question, working around Heather's schedule, um, Mr. Chairman, you seem to have an inside track on this. Would you like to be present at that meeting?
We've been, I've been present at some of the meetings and yes, I would like to. And if this to me concerns facilities and if Timmy would like to be, he's part of the facilities committee, if he would like to be there, be fine. I know, uh, Mr. Francis is, is anxious to get this deal done and so is the trustees at the college and he, Mr. Francis has indicated he could come over here anytime or if need be, we can make a visit to Wilkes. So yes, I think that, that we could have that meeting if Timmy would like to be present.
Yeah.
Just ask him to give us a couple of dates and we'll see what we can work out from there.
Be fine, thank you. Thank, anything else, Heather?
Can we get a vote on that?
Need a motion in a second?
Not a motion in a second, just need a vote.
Any questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Greg?
I'm with you this time, Bobby.
Okay, the motion carries five oh. Next will be, uh, item six, Allegheny County Library Membership Appointment. Michelle Lufman, Timmy Evans, you're up.
Um, I'm, you know, we brought this up the last meeting and we only had one recommendation for the library board member and I make a motion that we appoint, uh, Bill Osborne to fill that position on the library board.
You have a motion?
Second.
Got a second, any discussion?
See, switch the Republican, I'll approve him.
Danielle, you ready? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, likewise, motion carries five oh, thank you. Next is TDA of, um, board appointment, again, Michelle Lufman and Timmy Evans.
Uh, yes, last meeting we discussed this, we have five qualified candidates and it was the recommendation dominating committee, ACEED, to appoint Jay Woodruff and Steve Mason.
Have a motion, I need a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Motion carries, uh, three to two. Uh, this is the addition to the agenda, uh, it's the propane, uh, bid and Danielle, I believe you have that information?
Uh, yeah, we put out a request for bids and we only received one back from, I don't know, Kate. We only received one back from Blue Ridge Energies. It is a nine cents per gallon savings over last year's. Uh, you all have a copy of this. Their bid was for, uh, $1.39 per gallon. And the prior years it was, um, $1.48 per gallon.
Who had the bid last year?
They did, yeah. But I did reach out to all of the companies that have submitted bids prior and all the information that I was able to find and Blue Ridge Energies was the only one that sent anything back, so we just need a motion to approve the bid and then we'll get signatures from you.
Any questions, Mr. Carter, any comments?
Motion to approve the bid for the.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? Danielle? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, motion carries five oh, thank you.
What did I say?
That concludes, okay, that concludes that part of the agenda. Next is county managers' comments.
Just a few this morning. I want to first of all go back and reiterate, uh, the lighting on 90 South Main and just recognize David Spicer and his crew for getting that accomplished. It's up and going. Second thing is you probably noticed as you ride by the courthouse, a little different, uh, Christmas scenery than, than what's been in the past. And a lot of that is a result of having a larger tree. We all know what a larger tree does when the wind blows, so these smaller trees are giving others opportunities to, uh, participate in that, so if you haven't already, go by and see that. Want to talk about our Veterans Day ceremony. I think, uh, it was on the 11th, you know, a pretty good turnout, I thought. Good speakers, good, good weather, good opportunity that day. Know that we have three veterans on our board and, you know, appreciate you guys, Greg, Bobby and John, we appreciate everything you've done, so want to point that out. Quick reminder of the holiday closings that are coming up this week. County offices will be closed Thursday and Friday and the transfer facility will be closed Thursday, so want everybody to be aware of that. Again, want to recognize our, our tax office for the award that they receive, that, that's pretty, pretty monumental from, so we certainly appreciate those, those individuals. Veterans Park Stream Restoration, it started on the 7th of November. It's moving faster than people anticipated and we haven't had any issues yet. We hope that that's done in four to six weeks, but that'll depend on Mother Nature, so that project could, could finish quicker. The rec department, I know Randy left, but they're actually putting a float in the parade and I just want to say that county employees or whomever, that there's going to be a date on the 22nd, which is actually this week to help decorate that float, so we're going to try to put that together. Danielle and Chris Miller have been tasked with trying to figure out a different look for this room, so I gave them a deadline for the end of the year to get all of that taken care of, so they're working on that and of course David and his crew will be involved as we switch up some color schemes. And, uh, we talked a little bit earlier about a work session, the first meeting in December to talk about the possibilities of, you know, sports complex and such, but also I think we ought to talk about the fairgrounds at that work session also. And I, I call it the wants and needs of it and we all know the difference, but, um, I think we could have both of those topics on that work session to talk about at that meeting date. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Move on to commissioners' comments and I'll start with Greg today.
I enjoyed the food drive the other night. I wouldn't mind doing another one if y'all would like before Christmas, have the food bank.
Thank you for coming too. Timmy?
Uh, yeah. Couple things, the tax office would, a lot of recognition places that, look about, but, um, just wanted to thank those, those folks for the job that they're doing and everything that. Cool, big, big recognition on that honor for them, recognized for and, um, I have a question. The ARPA money that we had left over, that's just went back in the general fund, correct? Cause like when we were talking about the, the jailmills kitchen and stuff, I guess that's, you know, but the money, which has to be spent. Oh, you, we're good now. We got that cleared, okay, good. The other things is, speaking of the jailmills and you talked about, maybe talking about the fairgrounds and, uh, during the work session, but I, I guess Randy knows what's going on, like the activities that's being signed and booked next year because we're going to have to have a coordination sometime or another, like, you know, when you start the process of construction, you know, how can it be used, what we got to do to get... Other than that, I just want to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving. I hope everybody has, uh, some great family time and, um, and that's.
Thank you. Chair?
Um, I just want to highlight, since I'm on the social services board as well as the VA board, um, I want to reiterate what Mr. Shepherd said about the Medicaid expansion coming December 1st. It's estimated that somewhere between 900 and 1,500 people or will be eligible for this Medicaid expansion. This could be a substantial savings to people in Allegheny County for, uh, medical insurance. So, um, call social services or look it up online. You might possibly be, uh, included in that, especially if you have a, have children and a larger family because they've upped the, the income levels, so, uh, check that out. And also the need for foster parents. We only have two foster families in this whole county. So if children are taken into custody, most often they are not fortunate enough to be able to stay in this county. They have to go to a different county or a different state. So, um, I know that Stacy is trying to recruit new foster parents at social services. It's an ongoing issue. Want to say the parade is Saturday at 2:00 and, um, very thankful for the folks that put that together for us. Somebody told me that they visited our town and he said, "It seems like that half the people of the town were in the parade and the other half were cheering them on." And I was like, "That's about right." So, um, go out and enjoy the parade on Saturday and be thankful.
Thank you. John?
Uh, yes, uh, last time we met, I, uh, reminded everyone of the Veterans Day ceremony. I did leave out Greg. Bobby and I are the draft year. You didn't worry about it. You were going. So, uh, we look at our, we have a tendency to pass over our younger members. Greg, I apologize. Thank you for giving a portion of your life for this country. Most people pay their taxes and think that's it, but, uh, you went the extra step. Thank you. The Veterans Day ceremony was, uh, very good, well-attended. I just wish there were more younger people there so that you could see the people that have served. We have a tendency to be in the background. I know I was surprised whenever the, uh, D-Day movie came out. And one of the things, that was whenever we had a theater in Sparta, back whenever ships were made of wood and men were made of steel. But, uh, standing in line because they let the D-Day, uh, survivors in for free and standing on the courthouse lawn and looking at the veterans that were in that line was sobering. It really was. What people don't realize, that one of the first people that died were from Allegheny County on the D-Day invasion, according to the literature out of the VFW magazine. A lot of people were there. So the veterans appreciate it. I'll speak for myself. We appreciate you coming out and thanking us. One of the things that we fail to recognize often is the services that the tax office does. I mean, it's a thankless job. You know that people are not happy whenever they come into that office because we've got a panic button straight to the sheriff's department and some people get excited, but it's an essential part of county government. If they don't collect your taxes, we don't have the money to spend, but, uh, they've done a great job and they have recognition for a small county like this, that means a lot, it really does. Congratulations to Rita and her crew. One thing I'd like to see happen is recycles for the, uh, waste baskets in the rooms. Right now, we've got, we tell people, "We want you to recycle," but we have no way of separating it in the county offices. And here we are complaining because we're having to pay, what, $63 a ton if it goes into the landfill? Need to separate it out and make it convenient so that people can take that paper out of these offices and put it there, in my opinion. So I would appreciate it if we'd look at that. Thanksgiving's here. This is the time of year where I would dread it. Started out with the Marine Corps Birthday Ball, then we go to Thanksgiving, then we go to Christmas, then we go to New Year's, which translates it basically for about too much, you ain't getting nothing done. Well, Thanksgiving's here, people are going to be traveling, they're estimating this will be the biggest travel season on record. Please, travel safely. We need you back here so the tax office can take your money. Other than that, happy Thanksgiving, get ready for Christmas and we'll go start another year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. First off, I'd like to look back at the, uh, our Veterans Day ceremony and the charters of freedom. I think that the park looked great and I'd, I would, uh, like to thank everybody in maintenance for all the jobs that they've done down there and it was a great ceremony that day. Greg, I apologize for not recognizing you as a veteran. I, to tell you the truth, it went over my head. I'm not holding it against the Army, but thank you for your service.
You need to bring a camera so you can take a picture of me. I know you've got a lot of experience.
Even being in the Army, we're, we're still recognized.
Yeah, bring your camera.
Thank you, Greg. I appreciate that. The, uh, then I go to the food drive that we have, uh, Friday night and, uh, Brenda stood in for John. Uh, like, thank Greg and Timmy. We collected, uh, 201 pounds of food and $69 in donations. Michelle had to work. We got to talk to these people out there, let you off some of these times, but I think we had a very good, uh, very good food drive and it, it helps the people of the county and everybody that lives in this county knows Allegheny is such a caring county. All the volunteer organizations that we have, they really work and work hard and it's for a good cause for... for a good cause for the people of the county. And I, I really appreciate that. The holiday, or thanks, or the Christmas parade, like Michelle said, is this Saturday, 2:00 on Main Street. That's always a big turnout. I think with Thanksgiving coming up, John mentioned the travel people, please be careful. We've had too many wrecks in this county in the last few weeks. So, Chose and Cut's going to be here, so we're going to have a big crowd. Everybody just watch the roads. Hope all the Christmas tree people do bang up business this year. And to the staff, the county employees, everybody have a good holiday. And there's still some of them that work seven days a week, whether it be in the rescue squad or emergency management, whether it be bar departments, the police, the hospitals. We have people that work 24/7. So, some of them are going to miss that good Thanksgiving turkey, but they'll have leftovers. There's always leftovers. And I think Danielle has the agenda for next, our work session, there'd be two projects that we're looking at.
The sports complex.
Correct. And then we had one tabled item that'll go to the mid-month. Other than that, is there any follow-up questions, comments? Heather, we always give you, as an attorney, the last words.
I will just say, I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving and that your turkey is not dry.
Deep fry it, deep fry it. With that being said, I'll call this.